Good morning, County Council. I'd now like to call to order this council meeting of March 27, 2025. And at this point in time, if you're able, please stand and join us in the singing of Go Canada.
Good morning, County Council. I'd now like to call to order this.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Councillor Mackie sends his regrets today. Councillor McKay, Councillor Carlton, Councillor Pringle, Councillor McQueen, we are expecting later this morning, Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Dickert, Councillor Kentner, Councillor Keveney, Councillor Body, Councillor Gregg, Councillor Milne,
Present.
Councillor Dobrine, Warden Mattressopps, Councillor Bourdignan,
Present.
Councillor Eccles sends his regrets today. Alternate councillor Doug Hutchinson and Councillor Hutchinson. And I'll note that Councillor McQueen has joined us. So we have all members and attendants today with the exception of Councillors Mackie and Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point in time, let us begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Inishanabik Nation, the people of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nawash, known collectively as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. To our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. At this point in time, I'd like to make a call for any declarations of interest. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the adoption of the minutes. The first set of minutes that we have is 6A, item 6A. It is recommended that the minutes of county council meeting and committee, the whole meeting dated March 13, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Okay, moved by Councillor Hutchinson and seconded by Councillor Dickert. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, then I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Next, we will move on to long-term care committee minutes, item 6B. It's recommended that the closed session closed session committee, the whole meeting minutes dated March 13, 2025, and the closed session long-term care committee of management meeting minutes stated March 20, 2025 be adopted as provided. Moved by Councillor Keveney, seconded by Councillor Patterson. Any discussion? Yes, Councillor Gregg.
Just wondered, I don't believe the chair is here. I think Chair Mackie. So question, I guess, to staff. But I'm pleased to see that the write-off balance this year is zero dollars as outlined because there has been a recent trend in recent years of write-off amounts not trending a good direction. So zero is great. But could staff comment a bit more on what those tax write-offs amount to, how they come about? Right now, we're in the middle of a federal election. And while everyone is professing to reduce revenues and taxes, nobody is saying what they're going to cut to pay for that. So revenues coming into the corporation are still very valuable. So glad to see it's zero. Just wondered what we've changed to curb that.
Okay, so Councillor Gregg, I believe the question that you have for discussion will be suitable for item 6C when it comes on. At this point in time, we're just doing 6B, which is the closed session minutes. Yeah, so so hold that thought. And and I will, once I can get 6C moved and seconded and on the floor, I will look to Director Cornell to provide it. So at this point in time, we're only discussing item 6B, which is the closed session minutes as received. Okay. Not seeing a hands for discussion on that note. All those in favor? And that is carried. Now we will move on to item 6C, and it's recommended that the long-term care committee of management meetings minutes dated March 20, 2025 be adopted as presented, and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. That the report LTCRCM 0325 regarding a long-term care director update be received for information, and that the long-term care operational report dated December 15, 2024 to February 14, 2025 be received for information. That the report LTCRCM 0525 regarding Rockwood Terrace resident life improvement operating budget be received, and that staff be directed to proceed with the donor's request to purchase fresh flowers each week until the donation amount of 10,000 has been fully utilized. And that report LTCRCM 0624 entitled 2024 Long-Term Care Write-Off of Uncollectible Amounts be received, and that the recommended write-offs in the amount of zero dollars as outlined in the report be approved. May ask for a move or a second or to get that on the floor. Thank you. I'll take Councillor Carlton and Councillor McKay as seconder. Thank you. So it's now on the floor for discussion, and I will look to Director Cornell to lead us off in that. Thank you.
Thank you and good morning, County Council. I was prepared to give just a little bit of an overview of the meeting if that's still the wishes. I can do that. And then I'll make sure that I get to your question, Councillor Gregg. So as the warden has indicated, lots, there was lots of items happening in the meeting, lots of discussion. In the director's update, just some items to highlight, an overview of ministry updates, including the launch of dementia care sector preparedness initiative, which the three homes have participated in. And this is really promising. We're really pleased to be a part of this work. It signifies the province's commitment to improving services for individuals living with dementia. And so we were really pleased to be part of that work. Also, updates regarding a few different items around funding, which align with what we were expecting for and what we budgeted for. A little bit of a highlight about the polling stations that were available in each of the three homes for allowing residents to have easy and equitable access to voting in the provincial election. And we're expecting calls imminently to set the same up for the upcoming federal election. We had a virtual family call last evening that went really well, and thanks to Rob Hatton for his support with that. I also wanted to highlight the partnership with Nipissing University, BSCN students, and a partnership with the Centre for Learning, Research, and Innovation in Long-Term Care, and a partnership with RNAO Clinical Best Practice Pathways. So lots of work in moving forward our quality initiatives. We also had a presentation from Stephanie Matos, the Student Placement Coordinator, presenting our Color at Coach mentorship initiative, and that's a partnership that we've done with CLRI. And I'm really, really proud of the work that is happening in the homes. And we have been asked to present that program at the upcoming Advantage Convention. So if you have a chance to go look and click on those links in the slide deck that is attached, there's a video that is really worth watching. It's color at coaches that are frontline team members who have put their hand up to say they would support students. And a couple of really great stats. We, the three homes have supported over 170 student placements and 29,000 hours of student placement, which is really great, I think. Moving on to the operational report, again, a couple of things to highlight. We are, the province is transitioning to the Inter Rye LTCF Resident Assessment Instrument. And this is replacing the current MDS system. So the system that we use to document that translates into our funding. And the, all of the long-term care homes in Ontario must implement the new Inter Rye program by the end of this year. And so it sounds easy, although I don't really think it does. It doesn't even sound easy. So it's a lot of work. It's a worthwhile investment, though it allows us to have more timely funding based on the residents that currently live in the home as opposed to 18 months ago. But it's a huge endeavor where everyone will require training and the implementation of a new system. It does align with the clinical pathways, though, so that's promising. We also had a summary of the inspection reports and critical incidents, projects, events, and a little bit of more information about our emergency management plan. The life improvement report that Karen Kraus brought is, it's a really lovely report. And family members have made an investment and a donation to the, to Rockwood Terrace to have fresh flowers every week in honor of their parent. And so thank you to that, that family. And then finally, the write-off of uncollectible accounts. So to answer your question, Councillor Gregg, the way the, so the, the way the system works is that every year, long-term care operators can report to the Ministry of Long-Term Care uncollectible amounts and will receive 50% back from the province. As you noted, we did not have to submit any. This year, there's zero accounts that are deemed uncollectible. And that is in part by ongoing efforts of our partners in finance, the administrative staff in each of the homes, the social worker program, supporting residents and families as early on as possible to sort out the complexities that is moving into long-term care and their finances. And so that has played a role. The other change that has happened in the last year or so is that Public Guardian and Trustee, which is a provincial body that supports residents who don't have a substitute decision maker to support them with their finances, is getting a bit ahead of their waitlist. So we're, we're starting to see some movement in Public Guardian and Trustee being able to support payments getting made and in place, where there has been some backlog in that, where if it's two or three years behind, we have to decide, are we writing this off or are we waiting another three or four years for it to catch up? So that's starting to catch up, and that's making an improvement. Does that, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Thank you very much. It's good to have that extra information. Just one follow-up question. The additional administrative work that goes on then at your level, is that something that's just, you know, you're able to incorporate? Or have we staffed up to be able to achieve that better collection in the last few years? I guess the best example is, are we spending $30,000 more to, to generate 10,000 back?
Thanks. That's a good question. And no, it's really more about streamlining the processes, having them aligned across the three homes, having some more structure, templated letters, a little bit of a pathway. So we're able to better identify earlier on that things might be going off track and then set up meetings and start building support. We also have social work at Lee Manor, for example. Our social worker has been there for a few years. So they've, they've gotten into a process and a routine where they're better able to kind of identify that, those kinds of situations a little bit earlier. The province also increased some funding for roles like social work. So we have been able to increase social work fully funded by the province at Grey Gables an extra day. And Rockwood has two days a week of social work as well. So those combined help us just be more on top of it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, I would like to, thank you very much, Director Cornell, for talking about how it really was a part of good news and celebrations. The fact that what we're doing here is, is people are looking to see that model expressed across Ontario and what can be done. And on that note, the CAO, WinGrove, and I, we would like to do an additional highlight.
Thanks and good morning, Council. And I just wanted to let everyone know this was shared at the, at the committee meeting. Advantage Ontario is the organization that represents all of the municipal long-term care homes in the, in the province. And Jennifer has been recently acclaimed as the chair of that board, which I think is, is a wonderful connection for us and speaks to the highest esteem that Jen's held in the sector. So we're very fortunate and congratulations, Jen.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And indeed, that is a celebration of the advancement of your leadership. With that, I don't see any further hands. So we have it moved and seconded. It's on the floor. So I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Item seven, we do not have any closed meeting matters, nor do we have any item eight reports that allows us to move on to the bylaws. And we have a few bylaws to consider here. It's recommended that bylaw 522525 and 522725 be introduced and be taken as read first, second, and third time, finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and engrossed in the bylaw book. Three items. Number one, a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer for the County of Gray. Number two, a bylaw to appoint an acting deputy clerk for the County of Gray. And number three, a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of council. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Thank you. Moved by Councillor Gregg, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson. And with that, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. News and celebrations. I've got four things that we are going to highlight on our list before we open it to the council members' floors. The first one I'm going to call up is for our SOS, our Support of Outreach Services and OShare. So I'll look to Director McNabb for that.
Good morning, Warden and County Council. I'm pleased to have Colleen Trasteman with me as well here today. She's the executive director from OShare. I just want to bring up my station here. Okay, we're happy to be here today to celebrate with OShare. They've been one of the original partners of SOS since 2021. But this month, we're marking a one-year celebration that we've been on their side of their facility to offer our outreach markets. For OShare, what it means to the community, they provide two meals a day, every day. And even when not open on Sunday, they provide meals on Sunday for individuals in the community that need sport. They have a school lunch program used by schools and parents, as well as a family meal program where they do fresh fruit or fresh vegetables, fruit, casseroles, and lunch supplies given out to families. They have the Good Grey Brews Food Share where they rescue food from local grocery stores, and they redistribute that throughout the community. Last year, 375,000 pounds were rescued and used. And they also do 160 good food boxes a month to make sure individuals that normally wouldn't get fresh vegetables, that they do that each month. For what they mean with us, with SOS, again, this four-year partnership. Colleen, she's with us every two weeks. We meet and a contributing partner to the team. We have our market held, excuse me, every other Wednesday in Owen Sound at OShare. So what that means is people coming in to get their food can get the support of Support of Outreach Services. The family market there is where we support families of, of community members with mental health and addictions. And whenever we need it, we've been in some situations and emergencies in the last minute where we need food. And she's, I remember one morning, we called her at five o'clock in the morning. We had breakfast by seven for a bunch of people that were evacuated. She's there for us to provide food for emergencies as well. So really happy and so much needed her support to make the work that we do possible. Just a bit of OShare by the numbers, 139,719 community meals, 30,000, or 30,000 school lunches, over 35,000 family meals. And what they do is they, every market that we run, they provide the meal for it. It's generally pizza or something like that. But not only do they provide it in Owen Sound, they actually provide in Hannover as well. And that's really that first relationship building where we can give somebody a lunch, and then they can come meet with us and start to talk and build a relationship. So over 212,000 meals in 2024. And to make all this happen, they have seven staff and 140 volunteers. And if you ever look into help, it's a lot of fun actually to be there and help out. So yeah, if you're ever, I'm sure Colleen's always looking for a volunteer to come help. And this is something that's really been exciting for us, you know, offering medical care in, in just sitting at a table. It's not really all that. It's not the best ideal spot. What Colleen's been able to do in her facility now is she's developed this community room where we have the community health space with some donations from the Owen Sound Family Health Team. It's really just a community, a clinic. So we have an exam table. We have others washroom facilities there. There's a sink to clean up. There's a place for documenting and charting and to provide care. So we use that with our market every other week. And now we have a physician there and a nurse and a social navigator every Friday. And our goal is to increase those supports there to have and drop in mental health care downtown. And then also hopefully someday is getting nursing there for wound care, which is so badly needed in the community. So overall, we just wanted to say thank you, Colleen and OShare. She means so much to us. Like sometimes we get ahead of ourselves too. And we sometimes volunteer for stuff without talking to her, without knowing it. But she's always been so receptive and great with us. And she's always been be a better community partner to be with. So thank you, Colleen.
Well, thank you so much. It is such an honor to be here today. I was on the founding board of OShare in 2013. And I can honestly say that we thought that 60 meals a day would probably be about what we would do. I remember sitting around a board table and talking about maybe we'd get to 100 someday. We definitely never thought that we would be serving 25,000 meals a month or that we would be having a room in our facility where amazing nurses, paramedics, mental health professionals, a nurse practitioner, and a doctor come together to serve our community. We never thought that we would be a part of an incredible team of partners serving our community through SOS and FAM. But we did believe in collaboration and partnership, and we believed that what we had, we would share. And this included our resource and our space. When the Hanover outbreak happened and we were asked to help with meals, the collaboration that began then between service partners from all sectors was incredible to watch and be a part of. And I want to thank Gray County staff and leadership because it truly was your leadership and support that brought us all to the table to help during such a time of uncertainty. And your incredible staff have continued to support us at OShare and encourage us to where we are today. We're humbled to be a small part of an incredible team of professionals from so many different services who choose to come together in a true spirit of collaboration to care for our neighbors. It is truly a testament to the power and work that can happen when everyone is invited to the table to bring their experiences, their expertise, and their resources, working together for our community. At the last SOS market, I took note, there we had 19 different programs and services, all working together in 1,000 square feet of space. And in two hours, we supported 207 unique individuals. At our last FAM market, in two hours, we had nine programs and services working together to support 16 families, which represent 26 unique individuals and 43 unique children in our community. Talk about harnessing the power of collaboration, partnership, and re. Talk about harnessing the power of collaboration, partnership, and resources. So who's O-Share in all of this? Well, we're the hosts. We open our doors for the incredible work of our partners. And we welcome people with a warm slice of pizza or a muffin and a hot cup of coffee and a smile. We have a staff-led, volunteer-driven organization, and we have the best volunteers who truly are the hands and heart of our charity. Every meal that we share is paid for by the incredible generosity of small businesses, community groups, churches, families, and individuals from our community. We believe in collaboration. We believe in the amazing work of our partners. And we believe that for our community to thrive, everyone needs to be cared for and valued. And so we do that one meal at a time. Thank you again for having us today and for your leadership and for including us at your table.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see that you have a presentation to make, and we have a photographer right up behind you there. So did you want to organize that? And on that note, I would now like to invite Francesca Doughton from the United Way to come forward.
That one, got it. All right. So Warden, County Councilor's staff, the United, I'm Francesca, I'm the Executive Director of the United Way. And the United Way was honored to nominate Kevin McNabb, who knows nothing about this, for his outstanding leadership and innovative contributions in addressing the opioid crisis and providing critical supports to homeless individuals and those experiencing substance use disorders. Kevin's unique approach was defined, has redefined paramedic services emphasizing compassion, collaboration, and creativity, as seen, to solve complex social health challenges. Kevin will humbly bluster that he was never alone in all of this, and he was never alone in the creation of the SOS program. But it was his determination to save lives that inspired all of us to follow him with blind faith that this could be done. Under Kevin's visionary leadership, the SOS team pioneered a groundbreaking approach that blends emergency response with long-term support systems. Recognizing the growing intersection of homelessness and substance use disorders, the SOS Collaborative designed an innovative approach that integrates paramedic care with social services, mental health supports, and addiction recovery programs. The initiative has become a model for communities seeking holistic solution that prioritized the long-term recovery and wellbeing over crisis management. Under the SOS program under Kevin's leadership has not only saved lives, but built a more compassionate and responsive system that empowers those most affected by the opioid crisis. Through his tireless dedication, Kevin has demonstrated that innovation and paramedic services can truly transform communities and create lasting change. It is for this reason that the United Way of Bruce Gray nominated Kevin McNabb for the King Charles III Coronation Medal in recognition of his exceptional leadership, creativity, and unwavering commitment to support the most vulnerable. And I have that medal to present to him today.
Indeed, I think our surprise was a success. Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you to the United Way for putting forth that wonderful recommendation. With that now, we will go on to item, we have another item from the Business Enterprise Center regarding the Summer Company. Come on up. Good morning, Ms. Catalin.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lynne Catalin. I am the Business Enterprise Coordinator with the Gray County Business Enterprise Center. We help small businesses get set up and grow out of the City Hall campus. And I'm here this morning to talk for a few minutes about our Summer Company program, which is live right now. The tagline for this program is Work for the Best Boss Ever This Summer You. This is a student entrepreneur program. It is for students age fifteen to twenty-nine. And it gives them all kinds of cool things. So the way this program works, it's funded by the provincial government, and it's administered by the Small Business Enterprise Centers across the county. So we have funding for eight student positions over the summer. Successful students get a three thousand dollar grant towards running their business. Lots of business training, mentorship support. We work really closely with Bruce County, with Business to Bruce on this. So our students end up with a really good network of fellow student entrepreneurs to work with, which is fantastic. It works really well. And I guess I just want to present this to you so that we can get the word out to as many students as possible. Because I'm in all the high schools and I'm working with, you know, the business classes and the entrepreneurship classes, and that's amazing. But I also need to be reaching the students that are in the woodworking classes and who want to start agricultural-based businesses or who maybe are good photographers. Like, you know, it's so broad, and it's applicable to so many kids that are beyond maybe the accounting class, right? So the more people that know about it, the better this program is. So some of our past participants, these are from a few years, last year and a few years before. We've had students in so many different sectors. This is literally just the smallest snapshot. We've had coaching and training programs. We've had service-based businesses like aesthetics, nails. We've had some agricultural-based businesses. Students have used funding to start a flock that they bring to market in the fall, which is amazing. We've had photographers. We get the typical landscaping, cleaning, exterior, you know, exterior services, that kind of thing. But the point of this program and what I often say to the students is, bring me your idea, and if there's any way that we can make it happen, we will, right? We can be a little creative. We can offer all the supports. It's what we do there. So really, it's just getting the word out and making sure that all of our municipalities know about this. And, you know, students across Gray have the opportunity to participate. A couple of different ways to apply. They can reach out to us directly at the center. They can apply directly through the survey. The process is, I'm not going to say it's easy, but we make it as simple as possible. Students have to put together a business plan. We put them through some training, making sure they have all the tools that they need, and then we support them through the summer. And that is it. That is it for me. Like I said, we do try to make sure that we have students represented from as many of the municipalities as possible. But that really means making sure that we're out and reaching all the municipalities so that nobody opportunity.
I, we do have a question over here from Counselor McKay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very much. My granddaughter did the nails part of it, and the business is really thriving. And she's making enough money to help herself out that her grandpa doesn't have to do some fundraising to send her off to college. So she is doing good. So I'd like to thank you very much on behalf of the McKay family.
Excellent. And exciting to hear about how, what the the individuals that do participate, what they do with those investments and how it helps them in the next stage of their life. Any other questions? You have provided us with your contacts, so we can, we can direct people to contact you afterwards. I see a question from Counselor Dobree.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, County Council guests. I was just wondering if your information or a program has been sent to all of the clerks of the municipalities so that it can also get on to our individual local agendas? And we can pull that and then further elaborate on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselor Dobree. I have not done that, but I will. That's a good, yeah, this has been very good for some creative ways of getting information out. So yes, I absolutely will do that. And Counselor McKay, thank you for that. Brooke was amazing in the program. And all of our students last year, I don't know that this has ever happened, continued running their businesses through the year and are picking them up again this summer, which, I mean, that is absolutely best case scenario. So, you know, Brooke was terrific, and I'm glad that she got something out of it.
Excellent. And looking around the room and on the screen, I don't see any further questions. So thank you very much for that update. And we have a fourth item too, on the note of student creativity, youth and young adults doing, taking the charge and leadership. I'd like to call up Ms. Miles to give us an update in terms of the Youth Climate Action Fund and some exciting updates to share with your communities.
Here we go. Yes, I have the privilege of being on the Town of Blue Mountains Youth Climate Action Fund project team. And so I've been working to support the staff at the Town of Blue Mountains to promote the second round of the Youth Climate Action Fund. So as you probably heard about, in the press release, we have a hundred thousand US dollars to distribute in micro grants of up to seven thousand dollars to support youth climate action. So we've been busy over the last few weeks trying to get the word out to as many youth as possible. We've hosted a number of youth events. Last week, there was a guest speaker at Georgian Bay Community School in Meaford. And then last week, I also co-hosted a workshop at St. Mary's in Owen Sound, where we tried to really support the students in brainstorming, sharing them about the Town of Blue Mountains' future story, as well as going green and gray, get the ideas going. And really, the key message here is that we want to hear their ideas, and we're here to help. We also shared about Summer Company as well, because there is definitely some very entrepreneurial ideas that came forward. So we just really wanted to make sure that youth know that we're here to support them, and there's lots of resources available. We're excited to announce that the deadline has been extended from March thirty-first to April seventh. There's been a lot of snow days this winter, so that's definitely, you know, posed its challenges in terms of getting the word out through schools. So deadlines, April seventh. More information, you can find the link at gray.ca/climaction, as well as the bluemountains.ca/ycaf. So if you know youth in your community that might be interested, get them to reach out to Nick from TBM or myself. We'd be happy to connect, help connect them with a sponsor organization or any other resources they might need to get going. And if your municipality hasn't done so already, we would also encourage you to share it through your communication channels. I believe Rob sent it out to all the municipal communicators, encouraging municipalities to share it. So definitely any help to promote the program. We want to get as much money distributed across the county as possible to help us implement climate action and going green and gray.
Thank you very much for that update. And it is exciting that we are one in, one out of only five across Canada that have this opportunity to share, and that it's good for youth from fifteen and young adults up to twenty-four. So all of those Georgian College students you might know, or students you might know that have a connection here and may be away at school at the moment, but do have an idea that they'd like to work on while they're here. Is there is an incredible flexibility and opportunity, thanks to the openness of the funders to appreciate the creativity that comes from young adults. So thank you very much for that update. Okay, so at that point in time, I can put now the call out to other news and celebrations from around the county table. We'll start with Counselor Boddy.
Thank you. I just note that Owen Sound or I guess Owen Sound received funding for the ghost busing. We had enough money saved over from the grants the last few years, plus the revenue that had come in to be able to operate. But we need the provincial approval to spend that money and not send it back to them. With the help from our newly-mended MPP, Paul Vickers, we were able to get that that approval this week to be able to continue to run the ghost service up and down Highway sixty-one Guelph. So it's good news. Thanks.
Excellent. It is good news. And with that, a look around, we'll go to Counselor Cantner.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs, we have a fortieth anniversary coming up in Meaford. And forty isn't that many years, but it is a lot of years for a bell choir. And we have got at Knox, United, or at least Knox Presbyterian Church in Meaford, a handbell organization. As I say, they've been making music for forty years, and they're putting on a concert Sunday, April thirteenth at two PM. Admission is by donation, and there is a another aspect to this, they were thirty-five back when COVID struck, and they had planned a concert and it fell through because of COVID. So we're really looking forward to celebrating this forty-year anniversary with them. And I just wanted to mention too, you'll find Knox Presbyterian Church right beside Georgian Bay Community School on Concession Road Seven in Meaford. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking around the table, looking on the screen.
Okay, I think we've concluded our news and celebrations with the exception of CAO Wind Growth.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. Just a quick update for everyone. I think you're aware through a discussion that was held at the Community Services Committee late last year that the county had made application for some funding to undertake further assessment and analysis regarding the future of transit. We've entered into a collaborative project with Bruce County and Duffrin County, as well as SMART, the Soggy Mobility Group. And I was pleased to note, on March eleventh, we received approval in principle from the federal grant. So there are some funds coming to support that work of the group. And we're looking forward to hearing from the province about the OTIF application. But for now, things are moving forward in a positive direction. The first meeting of the project group is today. And this is a real first to have the two counties and an agency working together on this. So, you know, at the end of it, I hope that there's some really good information that's able to come back for everyone's benefit and future consideration. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that, then, the last item that we need to do for council is a motion to adjourn. Take a mover from Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. All those in favor? Thank you. We will adjourn County Council and give a moment for IT to be set up for committee of the whole.